All set? I'd like to call to order the Townham Candace Planning Commission meeting for November first, 2022. First item on the agenda is a resubmission of the Bowler, is it Bowler or Baylor? Bowler, of the Bowler Plan Preliminary Final Subdivision Land Development Application. And first, we have to have a motion to accept the application for review, which as I understand it starts the clock on this project. So can I have a motion to accept the application for review?
Motion to?
Motion from Al, second?
Second.
Seconded from Jonathan, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. So we've accepted the application for review. At which point, we're ready for the presentation and discussion.
Hi, my name is Dan Harrison from Tate Engineering. We've been here a few times before. Like you said, this is a resubmission of the plan that was pulled because the clock was running and we didn't want to force the planning commission to make a motion that probably wouldn't have been in our favor at that point. So we've been working through the engineering comments, you know, resubmitted again and hope to keep continuing progress on this. It's a subdivision that creates four lots in the R2 Zone District along the public portion of Harmony Drive. That's a vacant portion of lot, that's the at the back end, lower section of the applicant's property that he just wants to turn into some new lots and develop. Vacant lots as of now, there will be some utility line extensions that are really the main roadblock kind of still standing in the way of this one. We're, yeah, still, still working on the, you know, Gateway Review comments and hope to continue progress on this one, so.
Okay, Gateway, do you have any additional comments other than what we've already seen in your letters?
The comments in, in the letter, again, this is an odd type of a submission with improvements being made on a township road. Some of the utilities are available to some of the lots. Some extensions have to be made. I just think that there needs to be more clarity on the plan as to what, what's being provided for the people that are going to buy the lots. It appears based upon the latest plan that you're going to grade the lots and put in stormwater connections and other utilities, is that?
That's the purpose, yeah.
Okay, so my, my question is, and you're going to sell these to, this is this, the grading will be big enough to put house up there, but the house could vary in size, correct?
Yep.
So, how do you plan to address, like if you get somebody that wants to build a bigger house or build a bigger driveway? It appears that the stormwater is only sized for like nine hundred square feet.
Sure, we, we could size the stormwater up. We have a little bit of wiggle room to work the grading in one way or the others. And to put in a larger stormwater system if we have to take into account a bigger house or the driveway, whatever.
Sure, I, I, I understand that, but if how, if I'm going to buy a lot in this plan, how do I know what I'm going to get? And will you have notes that, like, like for instance, if you're only sizing the sumpster square footage for nine hundred square feet, you probably need to give some notice that stormwater management is planned for so much impervious area. Anything beyond that's the responsibility of the property owner to expand it. I mean, that, that's the challenge with this, this plan. Other utilities are pretty straightforward, single connection.
Sure.
I'm just curious how you're going to deal with that. The grading's straightforward, you're going to do all the grading at one time, have the lots all prepared, correct? So you know, S will be taking care of MPDS permit and everything else?
Sure, yeah. I, I mean, it might be a matter of when the individual wants to put in the the house, we could size the stormwater accordingly at the time, kind of do the stormwater one at a time.
If I may.
Sure, yeah.
Brian Bowler, I am the applicant. The, at the last meetings, one of the issues was me being a homeowner and selling these lots wasn't ideal and the typical way of going about this. So per the recommendation of board, I hired executive developers and they are now working with me, Chris Sinker, who has worked with township before. So he is going to work in whatever way we need to have the lots ready for whatever house they're going to put on there. So we, you know, that way we'll know which house will fall if you finalize the plans, if that's necessary. So instead of me just selling the lots, he's going to work with the actual building. That seemed to be the process and that was recommended or the easiest way to go by, but I explained that.
Yeah, I, I can just give everyone a little bit of background. After the last time we saw Mr. Bowler here, you know, he and I spoke, he had some questions about the bonding requirements and things like that. And I suggested, hey, you know, we have quite a few developers that work in this area that do kind of these small subdivisions and help these work through the process. They're familiar with it, you know, so I recommended you reach out and find someone. And which, you know, as he's just said, he has done, so I think that that is definitely a benefit to this application. Mr. Sinker, actually, the last time I believe that he put a development application in through here was Greystone, if I remember that name right, Dan? So it was a four lot subdivision with kind of similar on lot management and I believe a drainage trough in the back. However, I am kind of wondering now as we're talking about this, I, I don't believe that they sized the sumps individually in that development, but we'd have to go back to our files and look because that was before I started working here. But I would think we would want to at least consider whatever procedure we followed at that time because it's a very similar type of subdivision.
Right, so, so may, it might be simpler just to provide the connection for the storm sewer and then have a note on the plan that stormwater management has to be provided based upon the final design of the house.
Yeah.
Follow on some, something to that effect rather than, because right now the plan that's in front of us requires you to build something that may be big enough, may not be big enough. So just so you know, I mean, if, if Chris Sinker doesn't want to do this anymore after you get this finished, you can sell it to anybody.
Right, right.
And all we're trying to do is give notice to the people to buy a lot in this plan. And our, our requirements by ordinance are that the lots are able to be serviced by the utilities.
Yeah.
And it's our job to make sure that you're providing for that. So, does that make sense?
I think it's kind of, sorry, just wanted to kind of provide it sort of a general schematic of what onsite stormwater would look like and, you know, kind of assuming that the actual size and design and placement and stuff like that would depend on actual impervious surface and size footprint of the house at the time. It was just sort of more of a conceptual, you know, here's what stormwater will look like on each site. I think the nine hundred square foot is just sort of a placeholder, so to speak, and maybe that can be clarified through, like, additional notes and things like that on the subdivision plan especially.
Right, so, so what is, you've talked to Mr. Sinker, what is the intent? Is he going to work with you to grade all the lots together and do that one time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
And put all the utilities in and have the utilities available?
I, I was thinking that was the option.
I, I believe it is.
So if that is the only option, then yes.
Right, so, so the only question then is the stormwater management. So I, I think of as a part of the public improvements, if you show the connection to the storm sewer and that's provided to the lots and then you note the requirements, I, I think that what we were looking at was based upon, we were hoping to have some sort of a table or something that would have square footage of house in size of the sump or whatever, that we wouldn't have to go back and forth every time something came in and we have to look at it, you know what I mean? We've been through this before with this type of plan. I don't know why this one's being so difficult. All right, I, I, if, if that's the intention, I think we can work with you and we can put a note on the subdivision plan. And maybe some sort of a table on the subdivision plan that covers the stormwater management. All other utilities are going to be put in, you need to show those on the plan. You need to bond for those, all the grading's going to be done. Okay. So, clear?
Why was nine hundred feet chosen? You said just as a placeholder because is, and I don't know what the nine hundred feet represents, but if, what does it represent?
I, I mean, just a
Because the house, the house won't be nine hundred square feet, I can't imagine.
It was per structure, was it?
I scaled them off. Nine, roughly nine hundred square feet by thirty by thirty or thirty? I don't know, man.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly what the size was, but just a
The home itself is nine hundred square feet?
No, just the footprint.
All right.
And it didn't include the driveways?
Correct, yeah, so I mean, that, that's something that can be sized up.
So, so I, ideally, ideally you would, if, if the driveways are all, they're all, all these lots are up on the hill, right? So ideally, if you did your stump towards the bottom of the driveway in the front yard as opposed to the side that they're on, would that make more sense too?
Yeah.
That way you could collect the water in the driveway.
Gravity challenge.
Yeah, I have a real concern about runoff from the driveway out into the roadways.
Okay, sure.
I think we commented on that, but I mean, that would be my idea is maybe you just flip your storm sewer connection to the other side. And, and you know, then, then you would know the sumps could be put in that direction, you could grab the roof water and the sump water from the driveway side. I think that makes more sense.
Sure.
And then sidewalks would be put in that have to be bonded to, right? And they would be put in as the houses are put in.
Yes, that's typical.
Yeah.
Dan, our Dan, because we've got lots of Dams here tonight.
Yeah.
I, I was wondering, there was a comment, I think, on your letter about measuring the road, seeing how it lies compared to town, public road specs.
Yeah.
Any thoughts that you want to elaborate on?
Well, meetings benefit. Just, I mean, it's a developmental, I, I, I believe that I've already looked at the road a long time ago. Everybody agrees that the road is in good condition. We have a standard in the town of, of the roadway width. And there's no way, nowhere on here that I can determine what the width of the road is, only the plan, the existing dimensions.
Carway width, okay.
Carway width?
Are we talking the right of way width or the actual pavement width? I'm sorry.
Right of way width is only thirty-three feet, that show.
Okay.
But the carway, there's a town standard for the carway.
Thirty-three feet is town standard for a right of way?
No, fifty is.
So?
This is an old road, Harmony, Harmony Drive is old.
Yeah.
But it has a different, but I, we just want to make sure that it meets the standard width because
At least for the carway, yeah.
Right, if it doesn't, there's two options. They make a modification to leave it the way it is. Or they, they widen the road to bring it up to at least the half of the width to the standard. And we've had that comment since the beginning and we've never really gotten any answer out of that. I'm just trying to put some of these to rest.
Right.
What about the right of way width to get the half of the town standard right away with so improvements can be made?
Steve on the call? Steve on tonight?
Steve is not on tonight.
Okay, I'll play lawyer.
So, you know, I told him, we just have one subdivision and it's, it's not even the best plan, so.
So, so case law in Pennsylvania is such that you can't require additional right of way to be dedicated. If the developer would want to voluntarily provide the right of way on his half of the road to make it twenty-five feet on one half, it'd still be sixteen and a half on the other. So we, we can't require, we used to do that until there was case law that says you can't do that anywhere.
And I mean, it's, you know, since it was at some point accepted as a public road, I, I could see the point, you know, is that if you were just doing a simple subdivision, you wouldn't necessarily even have to go through extended this process.
The utilities might be on the right of way, then they'll, that a need easement is one of the points that I was thinking.
Yes.
Again, I, I, I don't, I don't, to me, it's more important to make sure that the road is, you know, close to standard or, or it needs, or needs something, I've gone to it. I think, I think it's probably pretty close from what I recall because I believe the town did make the improvements to this road some time ago. Dan, did you have any other questions?
No, I mean, I understand we're kind of plodding away at this one and I, I don't mean to keep the wheel spinning on it longer than the need be. I don't want to.
Are you okay with, like, Westview and are you okay with MTSA in terms of stormwater?
Yeah, we, we actually just heard back from Ray Alfen recently. He, he thinks on paper he is okay with the, the extension of sanitary line down to Victory Road. We're just going to have a site meeting either this week or next week between us, the homeowner, the developer, just to kind of hash out things like manhole placement, yeah, possible grading issues, things like that. We have, you know, slope to get down there. We have, we would not require a right of way from a neighboring property because there's, I guess, a gap between the property line and the right of way on the downhill neighbor side. So that would provide, I think, the ten foot of separation between any proposed sanitary line and the neighbor and property line. Lock and lot eight twenty-four M three oh nine. The property line comes out farther from Harmony Drive than Mr. Bowler's property does, so. We have room there to, to place a sanitary line and, and the water line is already existing at that point, so. It's kind of just a matter of dealing with MTSA to kind of finalize things like, like manhole placement and things like that, so.
Okay, so we will ultimately know where the sanitary is going to connect to.
Yeah, well, we, we plan to have, you know, fully spec plans through MTSA before any, obviously, any serious development talks can be finalized.
Okay.
Playing module as part of that as well.
And you verify that you have electric and gas and
Yeah, I believe you have.
Communications, do you have availability letters on all those?
Maybe, yeah.
Have you given those to RJ?
Yeah, they're probably pretty far back.
I think some of them were from the original submission.
They were all in the original submission.
Although, I'm going to have to double check because there's there's one letter that I remember opening the other day that had, it was like a fillable PDF. And I assume that at some point someone had filled it in with all the information saying that it was available, but it was blank when I opened it. So, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm looking for it right now to see if I can figure that out because I remember we had spoken about it a couple of times and.
So there's a sanitary sewer extension required and there's a water line extension required?
Yeah, the, the water line extends through the lower two lots, if there is an existing water line. I guess the southernmost two lots, so it would have to be extended basically through maybe one more lot, like one and a half.
So I, I found the gas letter. That one's available. Yeah, I'll have to look for the other one because I may not, I may not have actually kept it when I was thinking this file out. Since it was blank. Yeah. I'm going to go with it this time. I definitely have the gas letter and I'm not sure that I have any of the others on here.
Any other comments, Dan?
No, other than, you know, when you get your utilities out, please make sure that you include enough information on the plan related to the utilities. Or you'll bond the sanitary sewer separately with I believe. I know you will.
Have that.
And water, same way?
Yes.
Okay. So you'll be bonding grading, stormwater, sidewalks, erosion and sedimentation control. Those seem to be the items that will be on the town side. But I'll work with Johnson notes related to this stormwater.
Yeah, I, I think, I think maybe I had a little bit of confusion on what maybe needed to be shown on one plan versus the other versus it all, just in terms of general concept versus, you know, what will be recorded and
Well, the subdivision plan will be recorded.
Sure.
The land development plan will be used to approve the land development and we'll expect what's on this plan to be built.
Okay.
So that's, that's normally the way it works, so. That's why I'm saying, rather than guessing on the sumps, I think we get the connections in the right location. And then we'll put something on the plan and recover that. If you're going to be working with Sinker on individual lots, the house size may vary. The grading may expand a little bit in the future, I don't know.
Just a table kind of showing X impervious, Y, that square foot or something.
Right, okay. We'll, we'll work.
Looking at tentative location because that's what's on there right now, but we suggested that they closer to the base of the driveway while moving uphill.
I mean, to me, the biggest issue from, from our end to make the lots usable is having a stormwater connection and our storm sewer is right out in the edge of the road.
Yeah, and you know what? And I'm looking at here and I'm guessing that you guys have placed the sumps mostly.
Yeah, we're up the hill like.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm, I'm just trying to figure out if they're all within the front setback, behind the front setback line and it looks like some of them are and some of them aren't, so I, I assume that's not.
Was our thought process, yes.
It might have started off that way and then transitioned.
Yeah, yeah.
Are we insisting on where these sumps need to be, which is what I think we ought to do? I think we ought to tell them where we want them. Well, and not leave any, any option.
It's fine. I, I think everyone's fine moving it.
Okay, so, where everybody's clear that they would be at the bottom of the driveway?
Yes, I mean, maybe I, maybe some clarification on how kind of the closest they can be to the, the right of way in the bottom of the driveway.
Well, they're not in structure.
No.
So they could be within the setback line, that's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we could work on having you add at least on the recorded plan, sump area size to be determined based upon final impervious area. You show the connections, you get the connections put in on the construction plans. And then Sinker can work on the sumps as a
Makes sense.
Yeah. That way you won't have to bond those and it, it won't tie you down to one, you won't have to build them until you're ready. It only makes sense to do it one time.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, any other questions, Dan?
Yes, and I apologize, I wasn't here for the original submitter, so you may have gone over this already, but the lot is substantially wooded now, not with necessarily prime species, but are you planning on just clear, I mean, with all the, the grading you're doing, are you clear cutting it? Are you saving?
I mean, I meant there would be a, a good portion of trees coming down.
One of the reasons I even started to do this in the first place is they, trees are kind of
Yeah, you've got a bunch of dead pine spores, whatever, yeah.
I don't know what got to them. But they're dropping themselves. I was at a point where I was cutting forty to fifty here, dropping now it's so there aren't even many left.
No, there was quite a few left when I drove by on Saturday. Okay. All right, so you're planning on removing most of the trees is what I'm hearing?
Minimal as possible.
Okay.
More than half of already bombed since I bought the property ten years ago.
So, and that, the roadway leads to a concern I have. It is a very narrow paved section. There is a little uphill, there's some curves that you're dealing with. Maintenance of traffic on that roadway when you're dealing with the construction and or clearing? I, I have some concerns about how that roadway will be kept open and safe for the property owners that are using it.
I, you know, if, if, if I know a contractor's approach to this would be, would they would be and, and there's got to be an erosion and sedimentation control plan. They would cut far enough, they would do their, they would, they could do the clearing on each individual lot without impacting traffic. They would probably just follow the trees and then they would get construction traffic entrances in far enough that they could work on each lot. And then they could stay off of the road. There's not going to be a, a need to be on the road.
Is that something that we can make sure happens?
Well, I mean, we, we have the police and we have
No, I just
We, we really don't.
Narrow width of the road and the way it's cited there. I saw some people walking on Saturday and
Sure.
I
There's always a concern during construction. I think it's just going to need to be that they're, that they're we could probably cover it on the, you know. Yeah, because I've asked them to put construction traffic entrances in and other things on there. So, yeah, we can, we can address that more.
Thank you. And then the only other question was if there was any analysis done on Clear Vision for the driveway access points to the roadways?
I, no formal, just kind of a, a visual, you know, based on the, the speed limit and knowing based on PennDOT standards, how many square, or how many feet of site distance you need for a speed limit, things like that.
But if, if these driveways are single with driveways, which is what they look like on the plan, then you're going to have vehicles backing into that roadway. Right?
Potential, I mean, we, we might have a, like a turnaround up, up at the top.
So more impervious surface may be added for?
Sure.
Okay.
I, I think that, I think maybe a little bit more impervious surface would be more beneficial than cars backing out.
That's kind of my point, yeah.
Anything else?
No.
John?
Al?
Yeah.
On, online, Sean, anything?
I, I just, along the same lines about the road, is, are there any plans to, to improve Harmony Drive between Willoughby and Victory? Kind of where that, where those four lots are going, because it does look in driving around there, it looks like a, you know, there, the shoulder at least is, is not in very good condition. And, you know, with additional traffic, not just during construction, but with the residents. I was just curious if that was a, a plan?
I, I think my comment addresses that when I've asked them to label the width of the road and make sure it's up to standard. So what we can require is they, they may have to widen their side of the road or improve part of their, their side of the road to meet the minimum half width of the road because they only have half of it under their control. That's, that's the standard in the state related to improvements of budding and existing public road. So I've asked that question, it's, it's a good point. And I've asked Tate Office to, to look at that in more detail and, and give us information on it.
And then the only other thing on the, my, my other comment on the stormwater was, I, I think that the comment about just making a note that you know, that, that will need to be addressed when these lots are developed is, is a good one. I think the other option that I would see is essentially assuming that entire pad area for each of those lots is impervious and then designing the stormwater to that, it, it would be conservative, most likely. Assuming that there is no, no lawn or other impervious coverage, but that, that would be another option if if we wanted to be dealt with at this time. But that was all I had.
Does Tate understand what Dan was talking about on the width, width of the road and whether or not it, so you, you owe him an answer? You owe us an answer?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Carway, carway width and condition, basically.
Okay, correct. Brendan, any questions?
I have nothing.
Okay, Shelley?
Oh, Shelley, you're muted.
You're muted, Shelley.
So sorry. My only comment would have been to agree with Mr. Klein's comments because I also have driven around there and I think that carefully looking at the condition of the road and any improvements that are necessary would be beneficial.
Okay, thank you. And Kim, last but not least?
Nothing additional, thank you.
Okay, I have nothing additional either. Any other comments from you folks?
Just, I, I think we it's, it's a process. I think, yeah, we, we have even more clarity tonight than, than from the previous meetings and I, I've good figured out where we need to go from here, so.
Okay, well, I don't think there's anything for us to act on.
No, I did not put it.
Okay, so.
This is the public comment though, right?
That, we have no, no public that I see, but technically the reason that we offer those public comment periods with each plan is when we are taking official action also, when we are not. For this case.
All right, so this will be delayed, see, we'll see you next time or whenever we see you.
We'll, we'll see you again, hopefully soon.
Okay.
Remember, revisions due two full weeks ahead of the next meeting date, which is December sixth.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
Yeah.
Good night, gentlemen.
Good night, thanks.
Night.
Item number two, the zoning saldo modernization project, distribution of supplemental regulations and signs draft chapters.
Yep, so, same drill as last month, but different chapters. They're uploaded into the chat box. If for some reason you could not get them, let me know, I can send them to you directly. I also uploaded that same, you know, instructional page if you need it for commenting on PDFs. I was able to read and, you know, and access all the comments that everybody sent last time, so whatever you did, do it again, it worked. After, also just an update, after Um, after, also just an update after, you know, getting everyone's comments back. Um, starting the review with the consultants. Sort of our tentative plan of action moving forward with, you know, revisions and, and reviewing those again, um, because. And I was not surprised, y'all had a lot of thoughts, so we need a little bit of time to digest those. Um, and I've already talked with the consultants, you know, gone through some of your questions, gotten back to you on some of the ones that we can kind of answer off the top of our heads. Um, I owe a couple more answers to some of you, like I said, there was just. Lot coming through and we wanted to get these next couple of chapters finalized and out to you, so those will be coming if you haven't gotten the answers from me yet. Um, in the next week or so, however, overall, what we're looking at is probably two more draft chapters coming at you next month. Um, and once we have received all of your first round comments, we're going to give you a more holistic revision. Goal is to deliver that at the January meeting and then give you another, you know, basically in between period to digest anything that has changed. Um, we're gonna try to call out the sections that change more specifically, so that way, you know, you're not scrolling through it to see if your comment. Um, either was incorporated or if it's something, you know, whatever. Um, but our goal is we want to get a recommending vote on the final draft at the February meeting, because we have scheduled our. Public open house, that, you know, the second one. Which is talking people through, you know, the drafts that we're sending to council. For February sixteen. Um, we actually had it scheduled for January, but because you all had such, you know, detailed feedback, we thought, okay, we better give it another month. Um, so that's our date, it's been advertised, we gotta stick to it. We will keep cranking out those draft chapters and reviewing your comments as they come in. Most of them are shorter than the uses chapter, so it, it won't be quite so much to wade through. Um, that one was really the bulky one because it had like the old fracking ordinance, the old five G ordinance, um. But yeah, if you all have any questions about that process, happy to answer them, otherwise you've got your homework.
Okay, well, I. I, I gave comments, I suspect most of us did and, and I appreciate the opportunity to do so, um. I haven't, if, if you've given responses back to me, I haven't seen them, have, do you know if you have?
I'm not on the full con, so the documents that you have put the comments directly onto the PDF. We're just taking those into the consultants and we're going to get you, like I said, that, that full. Revised draft in January, anything that you all have sent me direct emails at, like. I know that you and I had an email exchange. On some of the questions you called, I mean, yeah, you know, I responded in line with the blue text, um. And I can't recall if we did that. Um, I saw, I know I saw Shelley an email back. Um, and Jonathan, I think you and I emailed a little bit out. Maybe, I'll have to check.
Oh, yeah, I had a question on the, uh, oil and gas and the cell powers.
Yes, that, yeah, so and for everyone's benefit, anyone who's wondering, oil and gas and five G unchanged from the amendments that we passed. Um. Gosh, I guess it was twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty that we did those, so, um, some of you at least were, were here, some of you have. You know, come on since then, um, there will be some minor tweaks at the final stage when we send to the town attorney on the five G ordinance. Specifically because the state has since passed legislation after we did our amendment. That restricts some of the things that we're able to ask for review information, um, basically anything that could be. Considered us expressing an opinion as to whether their service needs. Um, are supported by what they submit, we don't get to have an opinion on anymore. Um, so.
Because it's a utility?
Right, essentially, I mean, well, I don't know if that's what the act says. So, yeah, so we're gonna have, we're gonna work through that with the town attorney, but, you know, other than pulling those aspects out, we're gonna continue forward pretty much with. What we passed previously.
So was it helpful, I, I gave. Like a sheet of generic overall comments and then specific comments in the document is.
That's fine, I mean, wha- whatever you feel gets your thoughts and message across, like I've, I've gotten just straight emails and questions from some people, I've gotten. Both comments in line and general comments from a couple, um, you know. Like I said, it's really up to you.
RJ, I, I think I'm a little confused, um, so the information that we have, which, why, why I can't find it in my Dropbox? Right. Draft, there it is, okay, um. You want us to, the, the, what is in the Dropbox now? You already have, you've already taken those comments or you're going to?
These are, this, what is in the Dropbox for this month, the November packet, that's the new distribution of the supplemental.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay, I, 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 I wasn't sure if, because we got this a little while ago, people had already submitted their comments or they were yet to come. Okay, I'm sorry.
No, these, so these are due, I think it's two weeks from. Yeah, because that's, that's right ahead of my typical team meeting with them, so, um, try, we try to get them in. So that we can discuss.
Thank you.
Yep.
A, a general question, we've given comments. You have taken those comments back to the consultant and. Massage them however you've done it and you've put those into a new draft. Is there, is there a point or an opportunity for discussion? Uh. Hypothetically, I said, I don't want to see that in the, in the zoning, but you disagree with that. How does that get resolved or, or, uh, is, is your vote, the vote that counts or the consultant vote, vote that counts, or how do we resolve or discuss?
I don't vote, I only advise, so you are, are the only ones that get to actually vote on this document at the end of the day. Um, that said, the plan is, because we, honestly, we've had a couple of extra meetings with the consultants that we didn't originally have in the budget, so we've kind of burned through. Our, um, consultation meeting budget. So what we're looking at is either potentially in December or January, maybe leaning towards January, presenting that. Revised draft. And having Carolyn here or, you know, another team member if necessary. Um, available to talk through, you know, if there were any really burning questions that people wanted to bring up.
Does, does, does that have to be done in an open meeting? The, this discussion.
If you're all here, yes.
We have a quorum, yes.
We can't do it. We can't be called in on a Saturday and we just sit down and discuss it?
I'm, I'm not doing that on a Saturday, neither are the consultants.
Well, it doesn't have to be a Saturday, we can't, we can't, we can't do it on a whatever time and, and just discuss it, so.
I do not.
There's the opportunity for more.
To do individual meetings to each planning commissioner.
Well, I didn't mean individually, I, I. Okay, I. Some of these things just seem like they need more discussion rather than an opportunity for a. One sentence comment about a twenty page.
A hundred and forty-four page.
Well, there were, there were twenty page sec- segments that I objected to and I gave my sentence and said, I don't think these.
Hang on, I'm interested, what is the twenty page segment that we objected to? Help me out, because I.
No, the antennas was, I think was.
That's what we passed.
I know, I, my comment, my comment, the antennas was one, the, uh, oil and gas was the other.
Oh, yes, okay, so a couple of you, I think you may have had this question as well, let me answer that right now. We cannot pull out the regulations that are in our zoning ordinance and attach them as an appendix.
Which is what I was asking.
Well, I didn't want it as appendix, I wanted the supplemental regulations in the supplemental regulations rather than in definitions under uses.
Okay, so, yes, you had a different comment, I understand what you're saying now. We can talk about that. But again, we were kind of just trying to pick up and put back in that ordinance.
And, and I'm. I'm looking at it from the standpoint of. A, a town member or someone who's interested in doing something in the town may choose to read the zoning. It. To me, to have to go to four different places to try and find everything that might apply, doesn't make sense.
We made a couple changes to specifically the accessory structures and where they landed, because we had a section for accessory uses. Um. I believe in the uses chapter, but then. The template that the consultants are working with, basically, because I mean, we've made modifications to it, but there's a starting point, nobody's sitting down and fully writing this thing from scratch, you know, that would not be realistic. Um, so as we've talked.
Never did.
No, 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 nobody does, but, um, but so as we've talked through some things, we've gone, oh, you know what, this isn't supplemental regulations and templates, but it kind of makes more sense for it to have been in. Accessory uses mostly with utility things, actually, like wind power. Um, and so there is an addendum document attached to the materials that are distributed this time that notes like, hey. This is technically not going in supplemental regulations, it's going this chapter that you've already seen, we just want to let you know that we're moving it now, so you get the chance to comment. On this as well.
So, um.
We did not do that with oil and gas at this time.
Oh, I'm not worried about those, it was more the like definition when you were dealing with residences and also the terminology not being consistent.
So. A strong opinion on that, actually, I'll, I'll, and I'll, I'll share it, because. All of us are gonna have different opinions on formatting for sure. What I will say is the way that this code is going to be available is through ECO three sixty, which is a program site that has the chapter.
That can search.
Right up at the top, yes, and it's completely searchable. So any search term that you want to put in there, you can put in there, you can even do that right now, because we have our forward, it's on ECO, it'll spit you right out every section that's referenced. Additionally, one of the things that. Has been a challenge in our current code is there's regulations over here for this thing and over there, I mean, we're condensing the chapters significantly, so they're much more holistic in what you're trying to find. But me is the person that has to administer this document at the end of the day. I do want to be able to find everything that I need to know about this thing in one spot.
Yeah.
Um, we have lost things along the way, because it's not been formatted like that right now, so.
So we're on the same page.
Yes, I think, I, the oil and gas, I can talk with the consultants more about, because it's lengthy. Um. For example, like the whole conditional use application procedure that was put in there, because we wouldn't, didn't.
Didn't have it somewhere.
Yeah, we didn't have some part of this project relit yet, but now we're addressing all of that, so we'll probably pull that out.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, not messing too much with the substance, so we didn't really think it's a bit that much.
Yeah.
Wh- when are we having the group, you know, the, the commission conversations about? People's comments and the. The, and, and, and the application or the interpretation of those, because what I'm hearing is we're getting a revised draft based on individual inputs. In January, but this has to be ready for public in February.
Right, so, so, yes, you'll get the draft again. Based on that, and this is tentative, because I don't know how much we're gonna get from you all, you know, on this next round, if it's a little more doable, we might be able to push it out sooner, but I don't want to promise that. You know, because we. We had hoped to keep it. Moving out of the commission in January and just decided at this stage, you know, we got a lot of comments from you that we want to keep chewing on. Um. What I can say is that next time that I meet with Carolyn, I'll talk to her and see if it's appropriate for her to come in December instead of January. Um. But again, acknowledging that we've. Spent some meeting budget on having them come here a couple of times earlier in the project when we weren't expecting it. We do have to kind of be mindful, you know, like we're, we're not going to be able to have a three hour discussion at both of those meetings. So, I mean, maybe this is the question that I put to you all. Would you rather have someone here in December, when we have comments on most things out, but you haven't gotten to comment on all of the chapters yet? Or in January, when you've gotten a ch- comment on all the chapters and you have a revised draft? That you're gonna be chewing on over the next.
I'd rather look at what the revisions already are to see if they've taken our, if our comments have been put in place, why spend time on it? So let's look at what comes out of the mix, that would be my preference.
I, I'd like to see it when it's more finalized.
Yeah.
Uh. I, I don't. I don't see the advantage personally. It, it's, it's rather tedious to go through it candidly.
Uh, yeah.
And.
It's fun, but it's brutal when you have to come and unlock yourself in your office.
And I'd rather do it when I have. The most final version in front of me.
Yeah.
To, to review.
I agree.
But.
I mean, that's our, that's our current plan, you know, so, but. Again, I meet with her in a couple of weeks, we can discuss again at that point if we need to. Um. The uses chapters by far are gonna be the longest of all of them, I think off the top of my head, I want to say supplemental regs are under thirty. Signs are fifteen pages, you know, so it's a much less meaty. Copy for everybody to, to get through this time at least.
Um, you may get some repetitive comments, though, because we haven't seen. What was changed in the original, you know what I mean? From the standpoint of making sure terminology is consistent and, and whatever.
And here's what I'll say overall, you know, at the end of the day, I think, I, maybe Dan, it was, you were the one that asked, like, what is my input count for, basically, once we get these comments? My perspective is on the person that actually has to administer this thing, so. There are going to be some things in comments and I don't remember them off the top of my head, it's been a little bit since I looked at what every, everyone, you know, sent in. But there are gonna be some things that I'll look at and go, that is a fantastic idea. I would need two multiple time people to enforce it, you know, and so that was one of the goals of the project is mindfulness of what our realistic capacity is. At the size that our staff is now, knowing that there are no current plans to budget for more. Um, that said, we are changing a lot of things and defining things a lot more clearly and regulating things. A lot more intently, I think, than we have had the chance to, I mean, that's really what comes out of this rewrite process, so I'm not saying. We're giving up, we can't regulate anything, you know, it's just that there's a lot of stuff that I think is a fantastic idea and I, I, I've got one code enforcement officer. So.
I love the two front yards.
Yeah, right, yeah, you're, you're excited about that. Um, but also the consultants and they, they would say this if they were here themselves, they have to stand by their work and they are planning professionals. And if there's something that they say the case law doesn't support this, or the Supreme Court ruling about signs, as we have to blah, blah, blah.
Yep.
You know. This is the firm that we hired. We have to seriously consider their recommendations and. There's a limit to what they will edit based on what case laws is.
Um, RJ. It's Shelley, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I just have a suggestion and I say this because, um. After slogging through the hundred and forty-four pages. And you know, this was one of my comments.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that. The last two sections, which were, I think, oil and gas and the communication towers stuff. Um, which I understand what you're saying, state regs may change and you may have to, um, update those. But I think it might have been a helpful piece of information for the planning commission to have. To know that those two, all of the language, you know, because that was my question, is this the language? That was recently approved and passed, voted on by town council. Um. Or have you changed it? And those were very large sections of verbiage. For the planning commission members to have to slog through. I, and having been on town council when those were passed. And knowing how much thought and effort, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that planning commission members might not have a. Opinion about something that council. Could have. Missed. But it would have been good to know that those very lengthy sect- sections were very recent additions. To our zoning. Ordinances. And that they, they had been recently passed and they, I mean, I would tell you from experience, they had a high level of. Oversight, modifications, input and effort, um. You know, which, you know, part of what we're trying to accomplish here is to try to get rid of. All of the old stuff that doesn't match up, doesn't connect. Um, was written in nineteen seventy-seven, so. I'm just saying, this might not be the only example, but if there are newer, well thought out, you know. Things like those two things, I think that. It would be beneficial for the planning commission members as they review things to know that.
They're not. And sure, I'm, I'm sorry, because I, I did not put that in writing. It's probably something that I said months and months ago, where we're not gonna mess with oil and gas and five G, because we just did that, but we never wrote it down anywhere, and so. That's my fault and I apologize.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying that. Um.
I, I can tell you.
Yeah, I, I think I looked at some stuff as, oh, this is new language. And I think that it would have been helpful to plan and commission to know that this was. New language that had been recently passed, that was more modern or is modern. And, um, maybe would have focused on more important areas of the modifications.
So I, I can say at least. Off the top of my head, I don't think most of you, if any of you made comments on the oil and gas stuff, may, you may have, because you just got here, you didn't.
I, I pretty much assumed it was state standard in terms of what you could do.
More or less, so I.
Like, like cell powers, you're kind of controlled.
Right, and the majority of people were here, at least when we passed that amendment, but not everybody was, so again, that's my fault for not calling that out and I'm sorry. Um. I don't believe there were any sections other than five G, oil and gas and chickens that we didn't touch. Pretty much, because the chickens were also a hard haul section, so I, I said, let's not mess with those at all. Um, other than to just reorient where some things were section wise, because the new structure of our code requires it, um. But that said. I don't believe that anything in these two chapters coming at you now is a retread of anything in the current code. Good to know. Yeah, the, the signs, I can tell you for sure, those are smack brand new, like, we just used their best practices template. And then looked at kind of a few things that we had and built it into there, but there is no copy and paste. Um, in the sign. Um, in the sign chapter for sure, and I'm ninety-nine percent sure there's nothing in supplemental regulations. It's a copy paste.
All right, so just to remind me, what's the next thing? But it's already in the, in the, in the. Okay.
Yes, it is.
And it's due the nineteenth? Okay.
That's what I remember.
That's fun.
Sixteen.
Sixteen?
Sorry, yeah, it was the nineteenth of October, but, okay, yeah, so good, good number memory, but same theoretical date on the calendar.
Okay. All right, any other comments before we put that one to bed? Apparently not. Um. So moving on to item number three in the agenda, the approval of the October fourth, twenty twenty-two minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
No, no, we're supposed to ask if anyone wanted any changes or corrections, right?
Okay, I'll ask, because does anybody need any changes made to the minutes based on what they've read or seen? See shaking of heads and no comments. Okay, so we are back to the motion. Can I have a motion to approve the October fourth minutes? And moves?
Second.
Al seconds, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. And then last, or not last, but four on our agenda is a general public comment, but I don't believe we've got a general public comment, do we?
Yeah, I, I see maybe one audience member online, but I have not received a request for them to comment at this time.
Okay. All right, then we're, uh, set for adjournment. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. And, and I'll, I'll second. All in favor? Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.